Well, good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here. And I'm gonna get the meeting in order here. It's Tuesday, February the twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and it's scheduled meeting here, so thank you very much for being here. Oh, thank you for that. Yes, not on you. Okay, we're gonna have a sworn-in ceremony, and...
So trustees, at the last meeting, Monica Luhon wasn't able to be sworn in ceremonially for the board, and she said, "I'd like to do that this meeting," so we're gonna do that right now.
Good, all right. Thank you for not putting it off.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is gonna get away with it.
And we have our photographer here.
Yeah.
This is just here somewhere. Some good pictures. All right. You wanna introduce your guests who's gonna swear in?
Glad we found her. I'm sorry. Glad we found the guilty. Her husband was a teacher at Alzah High for many years. He passed away, unfortunately. But he was a great teacher there for his students. To this day, your Salda's home is open to students, past students. She's a shoulder to lean on, and she just embraces students and teens, and she helps them with their college, anything for college, anything for school programs. She'll help them fill out applications, grants. She is just an overall special person, and I value her and her family very much. And on behalf of our family, we wanna thank you and your husband for everything you've done for your students and for the community.
Thank you.
No, just have to start at the beginning. She can really do that.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Monica Luhon.
Monica Luhon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear the true faith.
That I will bear the true faith.
And allegiance of the Constitution.
And allegiance of the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
Duties upon which I am about to enter.
Duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Monica, do you want any picture? Do it now. Do it now.
Can I have my family?
Yeah.
And thank you, family, who are out there.
Okay, we're gonna go to the Pledge of Allegiance, and trustee DeWine. Thank you, thank you, everybody. All right, so we have our meeting, the norm, right here, and next I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. And we have a motion.
So move.
So move, that's first. Second.
Second.
Thank you very much, thank you. And we have a discussion on this, anybody? No? Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discussions, none? Okay, good. Okay, so C is report of action taken in closed session, and we have two people reporting. Dr. Christmas, and then Dr. Felicia.
The governing board voted with five votes in favor, zero votes against, with two abstentions due to absenteeism, Salzburg and Correo, to approve option two, a settlement agreement for resolution of O eight H, case number two zero two three zero one zero four seven one. The resolution provides for compensatory and prospective educational services and fees in exchange for waiver and release of all educational claims against a district through the student's graduation from high school and dismissal of the case with prejudice.
And Dr. Christmas, can you announce the motion in a second? Who made the motion in a second?
Motion was Mr. Yekidis, second by Rojas.
Thank you.
On resolution twenty-three twenty, the resolution on non-relection of probation of certificate-ed employees, the board with the motion from Mr. Felice, and second by Mike Yekidis, five zero. For yea. Resolution twenty-three twenty-one, this is a resolution of non-reemployment of probationary and temporary certificate-ed employees. It was motioned by Mr. Felice and second by Ms. Luhon, five zero, yea.
That's all. Thank you very much, Dr. Felicia. Next, we have student board presentations in Harder Middle School. We have Jasleen Placencia and Alexis, hopefully I pronounced this right, Winna, is that correct? Chop up anybody's names here. Okay, no complaints, so...
Alexis, can I make it today?
I'm sorry?
Alexis, can I make it today?
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for being here today.
You're welcome. Hi, my name is Jasleen Placencia, and this is Harder Middle School's presentation to Selena's Union High School Board District. Harden Husky TV, Huskies are stars. Harden Husky TV is an integral part of our day. Students can tune in and get all the information for that day. Huskies can take Harden Husky TV as an elective and learn different film techniques and video editing. Students can volunteer to act out in the different segments Harden Husky TV offers. One hit with the Husky Pack is Who Is It? Played on Thursdays, students and staff can submit a baby picture, and Harden Husky TV pulls the students to see if they can guess who it is. The Friday raffle done by one of our Husky Pack leaders is another favorite. Here are some pictures from Harden Husky TV. Gear Up: Things They Do. College field trips, academic advising, college and career club, workshops, mentorships, tutoring outside and inside the classroom, and lunchtime activities. College Awareness Month will be jam-packed with fun activities as Gear Up partners with ASV. Gear Up has had a big presence at Harden. They have a weekly club, and our students love attending. They have had, they've gained so much valuable knowledge and information about college. Husky Pride Day. Students will be acknowledged for being respectful and responsible. Eligibility is based on citizenship. Students will get to play a number of carnival-style games, eat great food, and socialize with their peers. Husky Pride Day is a tradition that students look forward to all year long. One A Center. Multi-tiered systems of support. Our latest group session was an affinity group of students who identify as African-American. Our district Jedi coordinator and community partner from Rigorous Love facilitated the group along with Ms. Roland. We did healing work surrounding the ripple effects of the Black Doll incident at Selena's High School. The sessions accumulated with the field trip to see the Black History musical in Monterey called Our Story. PBIS Rewards. We have had over a hundred thousand students earn PBIS rewards for making positive decisions about being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. Harden's Reading Programs. Our Huskies are focused on reading, and it shows. Quarter two was successful, and our Huskies were going for gold. We have seen a large amount of students going for gold and reading a hundred percent of their AR goals. Huskies are, Huskies have a certain amount of time to meet their AR goals. They can earn up to three different levels of prizes. Black History Month. In honor of Black History Month, Harden Husky TV showcased an important person in history each day who has accomplished so much in the face of adversity. Students started each day learning about the amazing achievements of some pretty amazing people. Sports. Huskies are champs. Congrats to our seventh-grade boys' basketball team. They won the seventh-grade boys' basketball tournament. Our seventh-grade boys worked really hard this year, and their hard work and dedication on and off the court paid off. Adopt Club. This stands for Alcohol Drug Awareness Prevention Team. It is a student-centered approach to substance use and is a student-led club. The Adopt Club has an upcoming drug-free teen lounge. Husky Library. Roughly a hundred students head to the library every day at lunch. The library hosts the Japan Club once a week. Our library pioneered the book vending machine, which has been a hit with students. Our amazing librarian, Mr. Navarro, hosts a Nintendo Switch raffle every semester. Students can earn Bark Bucks by being respectful, responsible, and ready to learn, and use those Bark Bucks to enter the raffle. Each month, there are smaller raffles hosted by the library and fellow Husky Pack teachers. Last month, Mr. Dalton donated a guitar that was raffled off. Now we'll be talking about student activities. Winter Wonderland Dance. Huskies love to dance. ASV put on their first after-school dance in December. Students had a great time socializing with their peers and enjoying the music. Shout out to our amazing Pack parents who made beautiful balloons a core for our dance, our parents rock. Lunchtime Activities. Huskies creating a pack. Huskies have had the most fun on Fridays. This quarter, a top hit for lunchtime activity was tug-of-war. So many students came out to test their strength. Music Mondays have been an opportunity for students to share their love of music with their peers. Huskies love music from many different genres and eras. Calming jars were also a hit. This mindful activity provides students with a way to relax and even self-regulate. Cookie decorating is always a hit. Future Acknowledgements. What's next for Huskies? Huskies are excited for all of the end-of-the-year activities. Eighth graders have their end-of-the-year field trip, eighth-grade panoramic photo, and incoming sixth-grade visit from our surrounding feeder schools, eighth-grade promotion, eighth-grade dance, and academic awards for seventh and eighth graders. Huskies are respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have from North Selena's High School, Veronica May Alberto and Ariana Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Burns, school board, and those in attendance this evening. My name is Veronica Maya Alberto, and I am the ASV president.
My name is Ariana Martinez, and I am the ASV vice president. After the school closure of COVID, Dr. White started a new tradition at NSHS to increase laughter and smiles around the campus. So every day, Dr. White shares a joke of the day to bring joy to our campus. We thought it'd be fun to start off our time this evening with a joke. So knock-knock.
Who's there?
A broken pencil? Never mind, it's pointless.
Last month, last month, North Selena's High School had its sixth-year WASD accreditation review. This visiting team loved North High and left us with many things to celebrate. Some examples are a great school culture, support systems for positive student behavior, effective bilingual communication, and an effect, an active student senate, a phenomenal PLC work, and a clean and well-maintained campus.
Our celebration of Black History Month has been filled with daily meaningful celebrations. This past Friday, we attended the district-sponsored schoolyard wrap, Our Story, the Black History Month. Our students left with a deeper appreciation of Black contributions to our country.
We are so excited to have two staff members who are being honored as superstars. Sensei Cameron Chin is the CLTA Outstanding Teachers of the Year. Ms. Ashen has been inducted into the Selena's Athletic Hall of Fame. We are proud of our Viking staff.
Our PBIS team kicked off a Viking challenge at the beginning of February to support student engagement. The classes with the highest percentage of students on time for class and the least amount of office discipline referrals wins a pizza party. As of today, both the freshman and junior classes are in first place. That's going to be a huge pizza party.
Vikings are finishing up the winter season. We're proud of all teams. Congratulations to the PCal champions, wrestling, and girls' basketball. Our boys' soccer team just won CCS this weekend. In fact, they played in the first round of the NorCal tournament today and won.
Last year, our PBIS team started a new tradition called Viking Days. At the end of each quarter, we celebrate our successes with music and fun. First quarter, we had a school-wide ice cream party. At the end of first semester, we enjoyed hot chocolate and music in the mall. We will have a BMX assembly coming up for our third quarter.
A shout out to Ms. Noel Norryan, our CTE College and Career Counselor, for making CTE Month memorable. Students filled out a passport to learn about the various programs. Alumni and Mr. Burns came to help with mock interviews as seniors get to ready to enter the world.
There is always a reason to have a party. All seniors that completed their fast food slash Kada joined our counseling team for food and fun at lunchtime.
To promote literacy, two ELD classrooms compete who can read the most. Each class recorded their points using accelerated reader. Can you believe over four thousand books have been read?
At North High, we have non-stop activities for students. Every Wednesday, we enjoy lunchtime activities in the gym or mall area. One of our favorites is dodgeball. The leadership class went to the castle training day at Sherwood Hall, where we learned from other high school programs. We started the new year with our winter ball. This year, it was held at the Fox Theater in downtown Selena's. It was beautiful, fun evening for all.
We are very proud of our student senate and principal advisory. The members are made up of senators elected in each first-period class. At the meetings, concerns are addressed and questions are answered. We have had guest speakers, such as Assistant Principal Mr. Wright, to answer facility questions, and the Food Services Director will be there next month to talk about the food choices in the cafeteria.
Our amazing choir, guitar, and band performed a beautiful winter concert at Northridge Mall. We heard lots of great feedback from the audience.
The Santa Lucia Rotary has supported North Selena's High School through the Student of the Month program. November through February, we recognized Angelica Ortiz, Veronica May Alberto, Sekulali Mendoza, and Giselle Monterino.
During the fall semester, the Thespian Club presented the play called The Crucible. In a few days, they will showcase the spring play Wizard of Oz.
Celebrating Others. Vikings have been very generous. When a group of students heard the SPCA was low on pet food, a team of students swung into action, collecting pet foods, blankets, and treats to donate to the SPCA. Every year, we collect Vikings stocking stuffers for families that could use some extra cheer this time of year. This year, we served nineteen families. The blood drive is back. In one day, Vikings donated nineteen pints of blood, which can save fifty-seven lives.
Thank you for celebrating our Viking pride. Every day, our school-wide announcements close with our Viking creed, so this evening, we will close the same way.
Never give up.
Stay focused.
On yourself and others.
And stay positive.
That's it for tonight. Thank you, district board.
Thank you very much. Next, we have individuals desiring to address the board, and we have five blue slips here. So the superintendent will call the people's names, and he will give you the guideline.
Thank you, President Rubio. So individual speakers, just as a reminder, you're allowed three minutes to address the board. A board may limit the total time for public input to twenty minutes. With five slips, we shouldn't go over that amount. And during that time, when you're addressing the board, the board will not interact back and forth or address the audience at that time. So with that said, I'll bring up the first slip is Robert Daniels, Jr. He was here really early. Oh, there he is, okay.
Good evening, schoolward and staff. My name is Robert Daniels, Jr., and I'm a representative of the Monterey County Black Caucus. To make that relevant, the Monterey County Black Caucus' main initiative is to maintain a discriminatory-free community and a discriminatory-free educational environment. So with that being said, I just want to make the board aware of the situation at Rancho San Juan and the discriminatory practices with the door decorations, and to also request singular meetings with each of the school board members to address policies and steps moving forward. One thing I don't wanna do is take away the voice of my community members, so I'm speaking as an advocate, and I would appreciate it that come speak after me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Pastor Smith.
Good evening, board. Superintendent Burns and President Rubio. Rubio, glad to meet you guys. My name is Pastor Smith, and I know most of you guys from the community, and I'm not here for a good reason. I'm here because our students, our African-American students, are feeling less than in your school system. And I wanna quote, just before I get into what I wanna say to you, from the Educational Code, EDC two oh one, and I'm sure many of you are familiar with that, where it talks about all peoples have the right to participate fully in the educational process free from discrimination and harassment. California public schools have an affirmative obligation to combat racism, sexism, and other forms of biases, and a responsibility to provide equal educational opportunity. This has not happened for our children. Harassment on school grounds directed at an individual on the basis of personal characteristics or status constitutes or creates a hostile environment and jeopardizes equal educational opportunity as guaranteed by the California Constitution and the United States Constitution. And I'll stop there. And so several incidents have transpired over the last three or four weeks in the system. We just heard from Robert, one of our community activists at Rancho, at Rancho School, where teachers, teachers, administrators, thought it was okay to place fried chicken, collard greens, and posters on the board and thought that was appropriate for Black History. Another teacher thought it was appropriate to place an upside-down cone, which was in the shape of a Ku Klux Klan hat with cotton in it, thought that was appropriate for Black History Month. And then, let me, let me be specific. We have teachers in Selena's High School, particularly Ms. Kennett, and I'm calling her by name because we're going to be filing a lawsuit against Ms. Kennett and the school board for putting her hands on one of our children, which is absolutely a no-no. And so we don't know what we're going to do or what we need to do to get your attention, but the Black community is sick and tired of our children being mistreated. Matter of fact, most of our children are having to go through mental health screening because of the harassment and the segregation and all the anti-blackness that they're experiencing on the campuses in Selena's, and we're just, we're fed up with it. One of the things that has not happened, that was supposed to happen by this board back in two thousand twenty-two, that was signed by the last board president, Christina, I understand she's not here any longer. She said that the school district would review board policies, administer regulations to ensure governments or the district addresses racism at a systematic level. That has not happened yet. She also said that she would mandate diversity, equity, and inclusion training for all staff with emphasis on implicit or unconscious biases. That has not happened. And so we have a sign letter from, from the board president, from the board president saying that these things will take place. These things have not happened at all, and so we don't know what we need to do to get your attention, but, but trust me, we will get your attention, one way or another, because our precious resources are being threatened every single day that they step on your campuses, and we can't tolerate that any longer. We won't tolerate that any longer. And I don't know how you feel about, and so I'm gonna leave you with this one question. How are you going to handle staff or hold them accountable who refuse to, to, to be taught what it means to handle our children appropriately? Many staff members say they don't wanna deal with the training. They're not gonna do the training. And if that's the case, you need to figure out a way to remove them from staff so that we can have teachers who genuinely care about our students. Or are we gonna be at these board meetings every week? You're gonna hear from us every week. And, and once again, please understand that, that we will be sending letters from our attorneys to each and every last one of you, if that's what it takes, what it takes. We're sick and tired of it. We don't know what else to do. And so we have to do what we feel is in the best interest of our students. And if that means suing the entire board, so be it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, I have Jordana Henry.
So many of you already know my name is Jordana Henry, and I've been an exemplary teacher in this district for the last fourteen years. And I pride myself on making sure all of my students feel valued and excel academically. And the last time I came here and spoke before the board, I was really angry because there was a baby doll incident. And this time, I'm just disappointed and frankly, a little hopeless. I'm not sure what is happening in our district right now. We talk a lot about equity, but lately, the actions I've seen have been anything but equitable. For instance, at our brand-new school, where our projectors and whiteboards, we've only had for two years, they're being disregarded as e-waste, rapidly replaced by viewboards. Our barely-two-year-old projectors were fine. Why not store the viewboards until our projectors are at least five to ten years old? It makes me wonder about the decision-making process that affects the teachers who are boots on the ground. It's hard for many of us at Rancho, a new school, to watch equipment that is still brand-new turn to e-waste. Off the top of my head, I know in terms of technology, our students could have benefited from calculators, charging stations, headsets, more hotspots, and teachers might have been interested in standing desks. How are you talking to our sites about what is needed? How are you talking to our teachers who are in the classroom to receive their input about decisions that will directly impact our teaching? We cannot just talk about equity. Equity is a practice. In addition to wasteful spending, I would like to know what the district and the union... I would like to know what the district and the union are doing to address racism and implicit bias among S U S D, S U H S D staff. Either one of two things are true. You either do not see the racism as an immediate problem, or you are ignoring it and turning a blind eye. Both are inexcusable and unacceptable. It is twenty-twenty-three, and it is obvious that we have access to an abundance of resources, i.e. the waste that's happening at Rancho San Juan. So why is this issue being neglected? I want to share with you that I do not feel safe or protected by this board, this district, or my union. What conversations are being had about how to address racism and implicit bias? What concern is there for your employees of color? What plans or policies have been drafted, and more importantly, what actions have been taken? I have seen none in agendas that I have been emailed. I have heard none addressed at the board meetings, and I watch them on YouTube. I cannot speak for other staff, but I do feel like my admin is trying to make attempts to move our school in the right direction. But after a conversation I had with my principal regarding the incident at Rancho San Juan, I let him know that we cannot do this alone without a true commitment and support from the district, the union, and this board. Please do not call and put this all in his lap, because my question is for the people in this room. And the question is simple. Are you committed to taking real tangible actions against racism? Because Black and Brown-certificated and classified staff and the students of color who I speak with are being harmed due to silence and inaction. I'm almost done. To share my experience, when I come to work for the last, over the last decade, I'm expecting to be traumatized and triggered. I'm asked to quote-unquote presume positive intentions, but I need to let you know that that is dangerous for me. I prefer impact over intent, and I want to give you a little analogy. I feel like my experience with racism at work is like me being hit by a car. The driver gets out explaining how sorry they are and how they didn't mean to hit me, but in that moment, I'm hurt, injured, may need surgery, and I definitely need time to heal. The driver then asks me to help them by teaching them to become a better driver, and I'm the one who needs help. I'm the one who's injured. The worst part is, after all the apologies, because this person is not taking any driver's lessons on their own, I know that I'm going to be hit again sooner rather than later, and will receive another insufficient, useless apology, and this will be swept under the rug. This is the cycle of abuse that I and many of my colleagues have experienced. And we are tired, we are hurt, and we need help. I'm not delusional, and I know that one, a one-off training will not change the minds and hearts of racists. We cannot keen in training our way out of this. I appreciate the work that the Jedi Team is doing, and I also know that they, they can only do so much alone without a real commitment from the union, the district, and this board. Issues of racism and implicit bias is the elephant in the room, and we can all see it. And I'm going to tell you, because I do read, I do stay up on current educational research, that everything that I have read tells me that no initiative that you have is going to work until the safety of your students and your staff are addressed.
So, next I have, uh, Douglas Belcher.
Wow, that was exciting. Good morning, Board. Um, I'm Douglas Belcher. I'm new to the community. Um, all of my children have graduated high school, college, and a lot of things. I'm a retired businessman. I am a Christian educator at my church with Pastor Smith. And, um, what I'm seeing today, or what I'm here for today, is to support what Pastor Smith said and with the tenured teacher just said. I'm getting information that children are being mistreated. It's not a good thing. It's, but it's, um, the Civil Rights Act or movement started in the nineteen forties, and here we are eighty-three years later, and we're still dealing with the same thing. Eighty-three years. They claim that the Civil Rights Movement ended in nineteen sixties. I don't see the end. My main concern is the students. I have a, a young lady who said that she went to gym. Her teacher put a fifty-pound weight on her shoulders and told her to walk the entire hour of gym. I've never heard of such a physical education program. I don't know what that is. I don't know where that came from. I don't know who developed it. But it was done to her. Sadly, the child is now suffering from neck and back pains. The pastor said there's going to be some lawsuits. Honestly, I think that somebody needs to do something fast, otherwise you're going to see me a lot more, and I got time. I'm retired. I'm retired. I'll come here and sit and smile at you, gentlemen and ladies, every chance I get. It's, um, eighty-three years past. Due. Eighty-three years.
So next, we have Cara Varney.
Good evening. My name is Cara Varney, and I've been employed by the district for nineteen years now. Uh, I started out as a clerical sub, and I worked hard to grow within the district. I'm currently the secretary for the migrant education program. I am here tonight to bring light to, uh, to, bring light to concerns that the confidential supervisory group have. Our group consists of the principal secretaries, district staff, plant foremen's. Um, unlike SVFT or CSCA, we do not have a bargaining unit. Um, we are the ones that arrive first and we leave last, and we are the ones that were on-site each day, every day during the pandemic. We are also the ones that have the highest cost of insurance. Uh, there was a board policy that stated the district would pay for our insurance, and I've only been in the group since twenty-fourteen, but my insurance has never been paid for. Uh, in twenty-sixteen, CSCA was given an automatic pay increase of seven percent because they would have to pay for their own PERS. Our group has always paid for our PERS, and we've never received a wage increase for that. Um, our group receives longevity at fifteen years of service and twenty years of service, for a total of six percent. CSCA receives longevity at ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, and twenty-five years, for a total of twelve percent. Uh, we've been discussing reclassification with HR prior to July of twenty-sixteen, and nothing's happened. Uh, we've heard for years that, that they would have to go to cabinet, take our concerns to cabinet, and get back to us. And I've never, in all of the meetings I attended with HR, had never received any information back except for when we asked, uh, for the cellphone stipend, and the answer was no. So our responsibilities are great, and as one person said, we're overworked and underpaid, and that is true. And we've been here for the district through everything. We would just like the district to be there for us. Thank you very much.
Okay, looks like, uh, we're moving on to, um, presentations, and we have recognition of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three winner-season league champions.
So i- in your packet, you can see all of our, uh, winter season champions. We had a great athletic season at multiple school sites. Um, and the way we recognize the league champions, so you can see in the board report there, Alsal High School Wrestling were the PCal Gablin Division Champions. Alsal High Boys Soccer, Varsity Soccer, the PCal Gablin Division Champions. North Salinas High School Wrestling, the PCal Mission Division Champions. The Girls' Varsity Basketball Team at North Salinas High School were the Gablin Division Champions of the PCal. Salinas High School had three teams. Their wrestling, girls' wrestling, were the Gablin Division Champions. The Varsity Soccer, um, Team were the Gablin Division Champions. And the Boys' Varsity Basketball Team were the Gablin Division Champions. So congratulations to all of our athletic champions. They each get a resolution from the board recognizing their accomplishment, and those are distributed during their banquets. So, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So then you said that, is it the, um, students individually or the, the, um, team as a whole?
Each student gets one.
Okay.
And the coaches as well.
And you, the, you, you just send it to them or?
So we give them to the athletic directors, and the athletic distribute them at the banquet.
Okay.
Yeah.
We used to sign them all before. It was a job.
It's electronic now.
Yeah.
We have you saved.
Okay, so, uh, students are, no, yeah. Okay, all right. So we got the, uh, moving on here with the, uh, with the LCAP quarterly update. And?
Mr. Garcia?
Mr. Garcia?
Yes, um. I'm going to go ahead and present one point two, Burns, if that's okay with you. And also, we're going along with the city district, okay? Tonight, we're going to represent, uh, Local Control Accountability Plan Quarterly Update. I have Ms. Kimberly McCulloch here. I have Mr. Juan Mendoza, and I also have Mr. Bobby Cannon. Okay? I'm going to go ahead and get started. Where's the remote? Goal one, the performance and opportunity gap will be eliminated. All students will graduate college, career, and community-ready. I'll be representing, uh, goal one point two. As you know, at the top, uh, we talked about goal one under LCAP goal one point two. The progress that we currently have, we have a green diamond, which means implementation is on track. What it is, is CTE Coordinator will continue to expand access to CTE programs to underrepresented student groups. We will also continue to support the CTE I L T team to improve teaching and learning practices to best serve our English learners and students with disability. The district will begin to use Naviance as a tool to systematize career development and exploration for all seventh through twelfth graders. Mr. Juan Mendoza will, uh, later be presenting a little bit about Naviance. Some of the accomplishments, the impact of this position in the first semester of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is as follows. Facilitate ten sessions of professional development, reaching out to the seventy-four teachers at, at ROP, at ROP. Parent event scheduled for February will expect the participant, participation of two hundred parents. Ninety-eight students, eleven teachers and advisors from four sites have been recruited to participate in leadership development during the spring. I'll give you a little update on number one. That was more, that was to, uh, work on the curriculum development. Uh, curriculum guides at, uh, CTE. Um, number two, out of two hundred parents, we had sixty parents show up. The sessions were in Spanish and in English. And, uh, advisor for the four sites, yes, that was under, uh, leadership development. Uh, was teams competing on Saturdays. We had thirty-six, uh, students win in our, in our area. So they'll be competing, that was for five different Saturdays to get to training. And then some of the challenges, as we know in the district, is that, um, the number of substitutes for the professional development. That's our biggest challenge in the whole district. The metrics, how we're going to measure this, number of sessions of PD, number of teachers who participate in the PD, number of sessions of parent engagement, the number of parents that attend the sessions, okay? And the reason, um, we're having all the sessions now in English and Spanish is to, uh, make sure that the parents know what are we offering at CTE, what different programs we're offering, what different events we're offering, and so on, weekends. Any questions?
Thank, thank you for doing the stuff, I, for, in two languages. It's, you know, thank you.
Okay.
How, how do you, you said you only had sixty-eight parents show up?
Yes.
How are you going to try to get closer to your goal of two hundred?
I think they're going to start using, um, the communication, uh, methods that we are developing in the district, which is talking points, making more phone calls. Uh, Mr. Appel just took over the position, who's our CTE coordinator this year. So he was talking about also, uh, putting out a news flyer, putting also sending out, uh, messages with the students, giving them flyers to make sure, and writing maybe some incentive for the, for the parents to show up. Now that the parents know that they're going to be in English and in Spanish, maybe more Spanish-speaking parents will show up.
And are you doing that during the week, on the weekends?
At night.
At night?
They have it, they have it during the week. They have to do it during the week.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Other? Thank you. Next, I'll call up Ms. Kimberly McCulloch.
Good evening, Board. My name is Kimberly McCulloch, Director of Ed Services. So thank you for the opportunity to share with you tonight where we're at with our LCAP. So for Ed Services, one of the LCAP goals that I, um, look over is LCAP goal one point eight, which is all about summer school. So our goal for summer school was to have a bridge program. Bridge is for our students coming into seventh grade from elementary, and also our students going into ninth grade from middle school to high school. So five out of five of the comprehensive high schools offered summer bridge last summer, and four out of four of the middle schools offered summer bridge to our incoming middle school students. In addition, we focus on credit recovery to ensure that our students are graduating. So seven out of seven of the high schools offered credit recovery opportunities during the summer. Of those high schools that offered credit recovery, we had four thousand five hundred and seventy students that attended both credit recovery and bridge program in the high schools. Ten thousand six hundred and thirty-three credits were earned over last summer. Of the middle schools, we had nine hundred and seventy-eight students that attended our summer bridge program. In addition to those programs, we offered a migrant program that focused on a STEAM enrichment program to provide enrichment to our migrant students. Also, our special education department offers extended school year during the summer, so our students have twenty additional days during the month of June to continue to go into school each day to support their learning, so they don't have learning loss over the summer. Right now, we are setting up for summer school this year. It's very exciting. We are working with SVFT in our partnership to set up the MOU for this year's summer school and to look at our programs and what we're going to be offering again for both bridge and for credit recovery. Thank you. Question, Mr. Rubio?
Yeah, unless somebody?
Do it.
Okay. Um, and during the summer, um, how many, how many days is that, is that a couple of weeks?
Twenty days.
How many?
Twenty days.
Twenty days at, like, all day, like, from eight to three, or?
So last year was from eight-thirty to three-fifteen.
Okay.
So it is a full day.
And then the, the students go in there and attend one subject or multiple subjects?
So it depends on how many credits they need. So they can, up to, I believe it's two different subjects, get, um, units for that, for credit recovery. For the bridge, they run a slightly different program, because it's more getting students used to high school and acclimating them and getting them used to the classes and, you know, the principles that they'll need for that.
So the, the summer shows what I'm focusing on. And are we offering, I guess, all, all the classes that, that would be normally offered, I guess, A to G, right? Um, during the summer for, for the, for the kids?
So each site, they look at the needs of the students, and so what students, so they run their reports of what classes students are behind in, and then that's where they create, we work with HR. So each site then lists what they want to offer during the summer for the students to take those courses, and then we look to hire staff to teach those courses. So there's a lot of pieces, just like a normal school year. It's like a mini school year, right, just in the summer?
So you, you look at, I guess, who are the kids that are deficient, right?
Which students need to make up credits?
Need to make up, and then, and then after you do that, then you, then you, uh, open up, I'm, I'm sorry.
And also some enrichment. So say some students aren't able to take specific classes during the year because they're in four years of band, or four years of avid, or four years of leadership. So there is also enrichment courses that are offered in the summer as well.
And how many weeks did you say? I'm sorry, I, I was processing.
It's twenty days, so it's about.
Twenty days.
Five weeks, yeah.
Five weeks, okay. And is that enough?
Summer's not that long.
Probably never enough, but yeah, it is an opportunity to support.
All right, that consumes. All right, all right, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that. Is that what it is? Okay.
Good evening, distinguished board members, Superintendent Mr. Burns, and cabinet members. I'm going to be presenting on LCAP goal four. All students will be engaged in learning environments that are safe, inclusive, caring, and healthy.
All students will be engaged in learning environments that are safe, inclusive, caring, and healthy. One of the, one of the accomplishments for this year has been hiring the Emergency Preparedness and School Safety Coordinator. He was supposed to be here today, so I don't know what happened. I wanted to introduce him to all of you. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it, but.
He presented last.
Oh, he did? Oh, then I'm a little late. Or, or he's early. It's Mr. Thomas Woodland, so I'm glad you all got, got a chance to, to meet him. I'll be working with him to make sure that the schools, or the students at the schools, the, the staff feel safe. One of the things that we're working on is creating a training program for campus supervisors, so they can know how to deal with students during lunch, during recess, between classes, so they can be able to deal with any issues that they may see that may be causing problems in the, in the future. There's also an agreement with Kimball and Associates to provide in-person specialized training on active shooters. And one of the metrics has been that all of the site administrators have been trained by Kimball and Associates in person. It was, they took place on, on Saturdays. And about 93% of all certified personnel have completed the online Kimball trainings. Some of the challenges is that the trainings are voluntary for the in-person. And that's something that we're, we're talking about to see how we can make it mandatory for everyone to take part in this training. It's a, it's a great training. It's a half-day training. But unfortunately, if it happens during the school, school day, it's, it takes a lot of people out of, out of the school site. So that's something that we've been, we've been talking about as well. And probation officers. We've also talked about probation officers, making sure that the, that the probation officers are on campus to make sure that they are able to deal with any, any of the issues that are going on during lunch, especially during lunch before school and after school. We wanna make sure that the parents, that the students see probation officers, so they can feel safe. And it's, and also making sure that probation officers build relationships with students and with parents, so they can know who to go to in case they need some type of assistance. Any questions?
I just have a question. So then, um. So then the only staff that this budget is covering is the safety coordinator. The gentleman who presented at the last, Mr. Woodland, who presented at the last meeting, correct? That's the only staff that, additional staff that it's paying for?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Go around here, anybody?
That's good.
Yeah? Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, so the next part is LCAP goal four, which is that all English learners will increase their English language acquisition towards English proficiency. So we're starting off looking at LCAP goal 4.1, which is looking at academic intervention and support, meeting A to G requirements for college and career readiness. Tier two and tier three interventions that support our EL students with disabilities and youth in transition. So something that all of our middle schools and high schools have done is offer after-school homework centers. So we know that as the academics go up, it is very challenging to get support at home, so it's been a long time since parents have done the classes. So having homework centers at the school site with staff there that can support with the homework is a huge support for our students that is offered in the middle schools and high schools. In addition, Mr. Rubio, you asked, is summer school enough? Many times, no, summer school is not enough. There are students that need to make up additional credits. So high schools have an X or a Y period, where during the day, students can have credit recovery, and we have teachers teaching those class periods, so they're able to make up additional units. This year, we purchased a new program called Edge Annuity. Before, we had Play-Doh, which was our online credit recovery program. And we switched to Edge Annuity, which really makes sure students are learning and mastery of the content, content as they go through. We wanted to share with you some of the metrics for the high school credit recovery. So all high schools offered winter intercession this year. We had 656 students that earned credit recovery during the high school winter intercession. Of those, 157 out of 656 were English learners. 51 were students with disabilities, and nine were youth in transition. In addition, we know math is one of the biggest barriers in our students achieving and graduating high school, and we really want to close some of the math gaps in middle school, so they're ready and able to go straight into high school. So we have a tier two math program in the middle schools called Math Support. Students are able to take a math support class, which gives them additional math facts and support to reach the standards of their grade level content classes. And then lastly, for enrichment, we have a LEVO, which is an after-school program that is offered in all our middle schools, that is an enrichment program to support students with both homework, with academics, with supports, and with different enrichment activities. Any questions on that goal?
Do we have any more math classes with teachers that speak Spanish? That give the class, as La Paz has, as?
Where the content is taught in Spanish?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any other, like, we have a math sheltered class at many of the middle schools, and so that is for our newcomer students. And those are smaller classes, and the teachers use strategies to help students access the content and the language in that class. So that is at almost all the middle schools and high schools.
So does Washington Middle School have that?
So I believe, I think there was just one that didn't, right, Bobby? When we were looking at the data. Yeah, I'd have to look at it again.
Is it a middle school?
Any idea, just off the top of your head, on an inventory as far as the other middle schools?
I believe all the middle schools offered sheltered. I can't say with 100%, because we were just looking at that data the other day in math. In science, I think there's only one middle school that doesn't have sheltered science. But in math, they all offer a sheltered course.
Yeah, I just wonder, you, we have so many kids in that position, and so, and we have Mexico right there, you know, I don't know, you know, what we can do to maybe increase that, you know. The argument that I have is that math, at least in my, you know, limited view here, is, is universal, right? Numbers are universal, so I don't know what we can do to, to do that, to?
I mean, we can recruit teachers that, that are bilingual, obviously, and, and those with a B-clad. And then hopefully, we can assign them to the courses that need it, right? I mean, that's, that's the strategy.
Well, and I think the other part too is that our teachers are CLAD certified. So even if they're not completely bilingual, they know the strategies and they know the techniques to support students who are English learners in their classes. So just this week, we're having a science sheltered professional development and a math sheltered for our sheltered teachers. And we just did the science one today, and they shared best practices. They shared strategies. They learned together, looked at the ELD supports. And so I think that's the other piece that we can add as a district, is supporting all of our teachers on what are, what does research say are best practices to support English learners, specifically newcomers? And what can we do in the classroom to support with that? So we had great feedback. You have it, Bobby?
All of our middle schools have, have these one between sheltered.
Sheltered math? And then, and, and the high schools?
They all have it as well.
They all have?
They do?
Alright.
Thank you. Okay, so going to the next one, I have the next one as well. So this goal was a new additional goal. And so this is really about having a high-quality literacy program, creating a literacy district plan, and also valuing our students' home language and promoting the seal of illiteracy and seal of civic engagement. So this is very exciting, because we are leaders in our district. Just this last weekend, we had Yoazama, who is our lead instructional coach, and some of our teachers, I believe also our Jedi, Tamisha and Letitia, presented at the social studies conference on our seal of civic engagement and seal of illiteracy. And they got a standing ovation for the work they've done and the work we've done as a district in those areas. So that is very exciting. So this year, for the seal of illiteracy, we're continuing to promote it district-wide. Yoazama, our instructional coach, and Cody Lee Mullen, who is our ELD literacy curriculum specialist, have been going into classrooms to present to all of our ALD classes on how they can earn the seal of illiteracy. So this is something that we're doing as an outreach, going into the student classrooms themselves. And they have a schedule with teachers across the district at all our different high schools to promote that and support with this seal. Yoazama has also been training our own teachers on how to do the interviews so that our students qualify for the seal of illiteracy. If they have taken those four years of language and passed their courses, then our teachers can do an interview that qualifies them with the seal, or they can also do the assessment. For looking at our roadmaps, our curriculum specialist and instructional coaches have attended trainings on the EL roadmap. This year, the ELD curriculum specialist and Director of Ed Services researched and reviewed multiple literacy plans to look at what are the components of a literacy plan? And what are the pieces that we need to bring to our district? So we've also had our first literacy team committee meeting. So we've now had two, when we had this typed up, it was one. And we have stakeholders across the district. We're still looking for a few more content teachers to join our team that is gonna be working together to create this district literacy plan. So we've started off looking at some of the research, looking at the purpose of the plan as we look at building it together. And for the seal of illiteracy, they're continuing to do classroom visits. And also in addition with that, the seal of civic engagement. One of our challenges with this one is last year, there, well, actually, two years ago, there was a position of a literacy specialist hired with the sole purpose of working on this literacy plan. And for the second year, they were put back in the classroom, but our team has pulled together and been working together to continue that goal and that action in the LCAP, even with some of the staffing challenges we've faced this year. And that is goal 4.3. Any questions on this part? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bobby Cannon, Director of Research Assessment and Accountability. And I'm here to go over goals 4.4 and 4.5. So these are all related to the same goal four. All English learners will increase their English language acquisition towards English proficiency. And 4.4 specifically focuses on the ELD classes and in preparation for the LCAP. So our accomplishments up to basically the first semester is that we were able to get out all the LCAP scores through Student View and Parent View to our English learners and reviewed them in numerous sites through their DLAC, ELAC. And we went over the scores in DLAC. We uploaded, or we're in the process, actually, we finished as of pretty much last week, purchasing a program called Elevation, which is used by our feeder districts, Aliselle Elementary, Elementary and Salina City. And it's a program that's gonna allow us to more effectively monitor the English learners, monitor their progress towards reclassification, helping us identify students who are on the cusp of reclassifying. Also, it's gonna help us do what's called RECLASS, RFET monitoring. So we have to monitor students who have been reclassified for four years from the time they were reclassified. So this system kinda brings all of our data together and allows staff, English learner specialists, and eventually ELD teachers to have a better pulse on what's going on with our English learners. And it's also how, gonna streamline our process to reclassify students. And I think it's gonna allow us to exchange data through Elevation, because our feeder districts use it. So we'll get more timely data on our English learners from Aliselle Elementary and Salina City, who have been using it for two years. So we had to onboard the process, do the data exchanges. That was done as of last week. So we're excited to roll that out, just in time for our EL specialists to reclassify students and, and finish our monitoring of reclassified students. We've also, our designated ELD classes have administered to a series of district assessments. And from those assessments, we were able to pull them out and go over the data. And this is all in preparation for the LCAP. So that was well-received by the teachers who participated. And I have some data on, on that for the next goal. Some challenges are just getting more awareness of LCAP results and the importance of LCAP. I mean, honestly, this is probably more important, not to lessen smarter balance testing, but this test, LCAP test, it really determines the options that English learners or our students have, because they have to take a designated ELD class until they pass the LCAP and reclassify. So the awareness of that, and also just for our content area teachers, like, how do you support them? Do they know the rigors of the LCAP test? And how are you supporting your English learners in the class? So that's an ongoing challenge that we continue to work on and build awareness on, both for parents and our staff. Let's see, any questions on that?
I just have a question for budgetary. You're at 90% of your expenditure, where six months into the fiscal year, almost seven. Does that ever worry you that, hey, I'm at the 90%? And can we move money around from other LCAPs?
Yeah, so one of the things that we did, so a part of this goal, the LCAP is a long test. There's four parts to it. One part is a one-on-one test. So we have 3,600 English learners. You have to pull those English learners and do a one-to-one test. So we were able, working with our subpool and, and the union, to incentivize teachers, our subs, to support testing. We are, we are able to pull them, pay them a little bit more. So we budgeted a lot of money, and we're actually way ahead of schedule, where we thought. We, we need to be done by spring break, because we're gonna be doing smarter balance testing when we come back. So we have teachers coming off. We budgeted for two months, they're finishing. We have two sites that are completely done with LCAP testing. So Mr. Garcia is having us do budgetary reviews. It's not part of the presentation. But in our budget, we're saying, okay, what money is not being spent? So things like, hey, we don't need all these sub monies. The other thing, part of this was the pull-out days for calibration and scoring. We had budgeted that for other subjects. But because of subs, sub shortages and staffing shortages, we had to cut back on that. And so we're having overages. And we were, as of yesterday, we were supposed to give our updated, expected overages to Mr. Garcia, and then they're gonna work to reallocate some of those monies.
So the answer is yes, you can move monies around.
Yes.
He's almost done with the cycle of LCAP for the year.
And I say she has money, so keep spending.
Oh, no, yeah, I know, I, I think there's some plans for that money, but we're, we're on it. So the, this is 4.5. It's teachers will be released to calibrate and score district assessments. So English and math are priority areas, because that's what's on the dashboard. We do have CAST now, that's state science test that is live, and it's making its way to the dashboard. But it's not counting for accountability at this point. However, the smarter balance test is not just in English, the English test is not just for English teachers. It tests the common core standards for English Language Arts and the literacy standards for history, social sciences, science, and technical subjects. So our history and our science tests, they are more literacy-based to support the performance on smarter balance tests. So we do take seriously support for testing students in those classes. And right now, they're geared towards, those, those tests are geared towards helping us gauge and support the performance on high-stakes testing. They're all standards aligned. The CAST is, the science tests are meant to be, emulate the rigor levels and the types of questions that students are gonna face on the science test. We had, we have a lot of money here to pull up teachers out. We were able to pull out English Language Arts teachers and math teachers to score performance tasks and look at the data there. So an accomplishment is, we were able to do it, but we weren't, not gonna do it for all the ones that we originally thought we were gonna do this year because of the sub shortage. So we have a lot of money on the table here, too. And that's all accounted for in, in our budget for Mr. Garcia. The pull-out days, we did manage to pull out, I think, 162 teachers. And 91% of them, who actually have the day to look at all the data that we have, said that that time out of the classroom met or exceeded their, their, their expectations or their, their needs for spending time with us. So that, I think, was a success. So that, I think, was a success. We shared data out in multiple platforms, so that's disaggregated by English learners instead, and it goes to the PLC members, it goes to administration. Part of the challenge is keeping up with the data and helping support, how do you have conversations about what we're seeing in student performance on an ongoing basis? So that's a challenge that actually we're working with Mr. Garcia for next year to make it a little bit more systematized in terms of when we test, so everyone has a better idea, a sense of the pace of being able to test and look at data and have conversations about how students are doing on an ongoing basis. We, I think, yeah, so we've been able to administer at least one round of tests. We're not going to, we have, science will be pulled out second semester, but we're done with that. Are there any questions on this goal here?
I just heard staffing, 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 staffing.
Well, what?
Yeah, I know, I know.
Well, I just want to say, like, we have to amend and kind of pivot, and we have all these plans, we put all this money into it, but we pivot, and I think I have a good working relationship with Ms. Vassler, and so we try to meet the needs of everyone. So I appreciate all the collaboration with them, so.
And I'm not throwing any asparits at you, okay? Nothing like that, no, nothing like that, but I think Dr. Galice is here, he's been with us for a while, and, you know, just the energy, that's all, you know, the energy to find people and retain them. I know, maybe I was going to get a chuckle out of that.
It's not that kind of chuckle.
I know, I know.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Christmas is the superintendent of Student Services. I'm going to be up here being a poor representation of my director, Ms. Jennifer Smith, who is far more versed in her area, but one is unable to make it today. LCAP Goal 5.1. 5.1 is basically working with our students with disabilities, especially in terms of graduating college and career-ready. Specifically, one of the implementation portions to this, which was highly successful, if you look at the second page on the slide, was the Transitions Partnership Program, which is basically a program that works on getting students with disability, especially in our ATP programs, jobs in the community, moving them forward as seniors, and then also juniors coming up the following year to follow in those career studies programs. If you look in the second column, item number two, you can see that in the 21-22 school year into the 22-23 school year, we had 33 juniors come up, we have a total of 62 kids in the program being successful in their community positions, and they're being supported by the two instructional coaches, which is what they were measuring in terms of metrics this year, trying to hire the two instructional coaches, the two psychologists, the attinerate parent educators. We fell a little short, we're still looking for them, we have five of nine that we're still looking for. We also have one bridge teacher and the other positions that you see filled there in order to keep implementing and growing that program. So overall, that program has been very successful for our special education students this year. So for 5.1 on that goal, are there any questions? All right. On the next goal in the special education world, our students with disability graduating college and career-ready. The Special Education Department has been seeking to increase our parent engagement. Implementation is on track. We actually have finally been able to find somebody to fulfill the position. We hired them just last month, and they're starting to already make plans and move forward for all the implementation, for what we want to do with our parent engagement, and increasing that engagement with our special education parents to bring them more into the learning process and help them understand all the different things that we can do to support their children with disabilities. Are there any questions in this goal? And the final goal, LCAP Goal 5.4, is continuing to provide, as you can see on the left-hand side, the supplemental instructional resources for targeted support to middle schools in lab, fortunate, and PE leadership, as well as a co-teaching support for those grades. Now, in this, we do have challenges again with collecting the data and the progress of EL and math labs to determine what would be beneficial at the high school levels from, you know, all the data that we're getting, but we're increasing that. PE leadership is now being implemented at all the school sites, life skill classes, individual studies classes at the middle school level. They have their targeted support with math ELA for students with disability, and co-teaching is happening on a regular basis on those focused areas. All right, overall, our substitutes, certificated EWA books, reference materials, all that implementation has been on track in this goal area for our students with disabilities. Do we have any questions with that goal? I want to thank you very much for your time. That concludes the LCAP presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So we're going to District Communications, Employee Organizations, CSEA. Nobody here? Okay, SVFT. Thank you.
SVFT has never shared this publicly, but evidently it is now time, following the comments from Ms. Henry. Following the Dahl incident, SVFT leadership reached out to the American Federation of Teachers and their leadership. We reached out to the Office of Human Rights, and Dr. Regina Thomas, a leader nationally, met with us. This meeting started September 28th, seven days following the Dahl incident. We were ready and willing, but more so, our national affiliate, who are experts, were willing to bring resources, personnel, anything our district needed. And we were met with silence. The district leadership decided to go in a different direction. We were brought along, but to say that the union did not lead, we brought the big guns, and the district turned us down. This weekend, when I was made aware of the happenings at Rancho San Juan, I sometimes enjoy a weekend, but rarely, because I'm committed to this work. I immediately, immediately reached out to some of the teachers at Rancho San Juan to understand, and I reached out to Mr. Burns. We spent several hours on Sunday talking, and I insisted, and he agreed. This has to happen. We have to start. Mr. Burns, Ms. Tamisha Smith, Dr. Christmas, and I met yesterday. I'm sure we all rearranged our schedules. I know I did because, again, for the union, for Salinas Valley Federation of Teachers, anti-racism is important to address. And we took some strides yesterday. And we will be partners. We have been through a lot. I'm going to continue with what I planned to say, and I have to acknowledge the confidential supervisory folks that came up here, they need to be taken care of. Following with Bobby Cannon, we really want to acknowledge the work that has been done this year, finally, to prioritize the LCAP administration on sites. Schedules were changed, and our English learners were finally prioritized, that they are taking a high-stakes test. Now, what we hope is that the district looks at the schedules, the systems, and the cycles of continuous improvement that the district likes to use so often. Why don't you see if this really works? Because I know there were some sites that rushed through it. Compliance. This isn't compliance. English is the gatekeeper to success, and we owe it to all of our English learners to give them the chance. So let's have a PDSA cycle. You guys want to do PDSA? Let's look at these schedules. Let's see if they helped. Let's see what worked, what didn't work. And listen to the practitioners, those administering. How about talking to the kids and having empathy interviews? How did you feel testing in a closet? How did you feel testing in a huge empty library? Let's find out what works for these kids. But the commitment to them this year, it was good. I also want to acknowledge Trustee Rubio and Trustee Felice for serving on the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, the work that Ms. Aguiar is working on, as well as community members. It was a very fruitful conversation. Everyone's voice was heard, and today is a celebration that the district distributed a survey to their employees to find out who is interested in this housing. As a board, I think this is something you should be proud of. Now for areas that SVFT members are concerned with. You've all received emails with concerns regarding student behavior and discipline. To put it bluntly, something has to be done. Social media, students' emotional imbalances and illness, they're significant variables, but something has to happen to return our schools to places of learning. SVFT leadership has visited every site. We visit sites twice a year. And listen to educators, those practitioners, that do this work. And what we have consistently learned is that because the adults in charge are so afraid to suspend because of the dashboard, or they resort to restorative justice practices that the kids still don't understand. The rules aren't being enforced, and the kids are making the rules, guys, and our schools are unsafe. Between when you saw me at 5:00 to now, I ran into a veteran teacher at one of our high schools, who said to me, and this teacher is not ready to retire, but they're a veteran, you know, Katie, last year was tough, and we all said that was tough. This is the hardest year I have ever had in teaching. Which leads me to my last topic. And since the agenda was adopted without tabling the certificated list, there's a reason why you, the district, doesn't have signing bonuses for this hiring fair. Why would SVFT agree to incentivizing brand-new teachers or veteran teachers to come work in this district? When those who have endured this year and last year, the hardest years in education in the United States, are being dismissed? So here's the truth. Rancho San Juan is releasing three math teachers. On your paper, it says they resigned, and that is to allow them to be able to apply in the future for other jobs. Some of these teachers are probationary two, and some of them are probationary one. In the evaluation, for two of them, the concern the administrator wrote was lack of classroom management. I wonder if classroom management had anything to do with the current state of mind of students today? But now you have lost three math teachers who maybe needed some more support or a more normal year. There is no manual for any of us to address what we are facing in education. Did you know that the administrator over counseling at Rancho San Juan oversees a counselor in her department who is her niece? Rancho San Juan also released a first-year counselor, first year, just learning her This administrator had her niece rearrange the classroom presentation schedule so that this first-year counselor would go into one of the toughest classrooms on Rancho San Juan and was heard saying, if she can survive this, then I'll keep her. This is a conflict of interest, and you have just lost a graduate of one of your high schools who came up through the ranks, wants to be a counselor in this district, and she was a probationary one. At the same time that you are releasing probationary one teachers, as a board, you have authorized new cabinet members to get support as they learn their job. I think that is fair. You have a huge job. But how is it that cabinet members get such grace as they learn their job? Or is admin who are at sites struggling to learn their job? They are given grace. They are given patience as they learn their job. Not the case where there's conflict of interest. And now I'll go on to the site with nepotism. Aliselle High School forgot to evaluate their probationary teachers. They were observed in September and then not again until December, December 8th and December 9th, to be exact, Thursday and Friday before finals, when teachers are having students make up work so that they pass their courses. That's when they were observed. Then they were put on plans of assistance. My favorite is the science teacher. My favorite is the science teacher who the administrator told her that she needed to be within four days of the scope and sequence as the other classes. When she has, if you don't know, Alisal has a house that has primarily English learners, the sheltered courses, and students with disability. It would be inappropriate for her to keep the pace of the other science teachers. When she met for her third observation, the administrator reprimanded her for using Spanish, Trustee Rubio, Spanish in the class with English learners and newcomers so that they could understand the content. There was a sped teacher that was non-re-elected, sped special education, fully credentialed, new to the district, new to Cyrus, who was rumored to have been released because the administrator's daughter's boyfriend wants to work at Alisal High School in special education. And it is known, well, we just figured he was being released because so-and-so wants a job. I wish Trustee Padilla Salzberg were here tonight to hear about the administrator who went to the art teacher his first year and wanted to have a conversation with him, and he said, "Should I have a union representative with me?" And she said, "If you bring the union, it will only get worse for you." The wine gardener writes allows an employee to have union representation. We're not sure what was the last straw. This is a teacher with leadership who mentored the interns in the department, and you are releasing him. Probably because he actually stood up for his rights as an employee. In that meeting, I actually had to help the administrator develop the plan of assistance because they had never developed one. One of the criticisms in the observation was that the teacher should write with complete sentences on his whiteboard to develop literacy. Yet, the whole observation form and plan of assistance were bullets in complete sentences that made no sense. If you want to attract educators, let's start with an established system that supports everyone based on the instructional strategies that leads to student learning. When is this district going to calibrate with all of their administrators? So that they understand the tremendous responsibility they have to build this perfection profession rather than knock people down? What your certificated staff are dealing with right now? Bobby used the word pivot, so I'm going to use the word unprecedented, even though those were two words that we thought we'd leave behind with COVID. I don't think your admin staff get it. There's work to do.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to board members. And Luhan, we'll start with you.
I just want to say I've been to visit a few sites. And most of the concerns are about school safety, student behavior. So I look forward into discussing and getting more information in regards to to that with Mr. Burns in the near future. Because I believe ensuring ensuring students with a safe environment is very pivotal in learning. So I was happy to meet new faces. And concerns are good because they're being brought up. So I look forward to speaking with you this week about that. Thank you.
Anything else? That's all?
That's it.
Trustee Okitas?
Thank you. I have an ROP meeting this Thursday in King City, so I'm looking forward to report back at our next meeting on that. And I do agree with Trustee Luhan. I know Superintendent Burns, you had mentioned the probation contract. And I believe that's probably time to bring that back sooner than later with the emails that we're getting from staff and parents about campus security. Doesn't sound like the $2 million we're paying, we're getting our money's worth, so we probably have to alter that for pay-for-performance. They show up, they get paid, they don't, they don't. So it seems pretty critical based on what we're hearing, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rojas?
Kind of want to echo on Trustee Okitas. I was going to bring that up about the probation officers. When I first came on board, I remember looking at the contract. And so what we were paying was the salary of a PO3. And I questioned that. I go, "Why are we paying PO3s if we're only getting PO1s and PO2s at our schools?" And that's when we thought we were going to have a PO at every site, but now it turns out that some of the, some schools do not even have a PO. Or we have schools that have a shared PO where they do a one-day-one school and a day-different school. So that's something that I want to bring up and revisit that contract and see how can, you know, we modify or change it? Or is there any extra support that we can provide to our schools? Because we don't, you know, training for the teacher for active shooter and all that's fine, but we don't expect to be in harm's way and stand in front of these first responders when a situation unfolds, which has been happening Sunday. I was, I was with some families and also got a call. And then they shared about an incident where some kids went into this facility and just kind of beat this child. So, you know, I'm wondering, let's take a proactive approach. I mean, I have a child in middle school. I mean, as a parent, I'm concerned that could be my child. So I'm worried about that, and I do want to take off the stress from the staff and the teachers to deal with this kind of situation. We need to step up and take back our school. This past Saturday, I was invited to the family of Jorge Alvarado. It was one year that he got killed, the officer that got killed in line duty. And it was kind of a nice reception the city had. The street that goes into the car wash, they named it J.D. Alvarado. They also unveiled a statue of him. So it was kind of nice to meet all the dignitaries, all the officials, politicians, and the family and the community that came together for that event. So it was, it was a nice event for the Alvarado family. And last, I look forward to the job offer that we have this Saturday at the Steinbeck Center from 9:00 to 4:00. So hopefully, we get a good turnout. We, hopefully, we have the onsite interviews and offer contracts right on the spot.
See you there.
That's up.
I have no comments?
Nothing at all?
Yes. I just wanted to report that on Friday, it was the SUHSD All District Honor Band guitar and choir performance. Middle school and high school musicians gathered together to play a beautiful concert. It was pretty lovely, and the students seemed to enjoy it a lot, too. That's all.
That's all you?
Took it off my list.
Trustee Carrillo?
I did attend last week the Community Human Services Committee meeting, subcommittee meeting. And they, on top of, other than finances, they did report on the homeless drop-in services for students. The center is located in Monterey, so my question, of course, was what's happening in Salinas? So they're looking for the funding resources to provide those services for our students here in Salinas. And that was about it.
All right. It was good to have a lot of people in here today and just to hear them. So it's always good when there's people here. That's good. I feel it's good engaging, even though sometimes it may not feel positive, but it's good to hear that. And regarding the pictures of the food, Dr. Christmas educated me on that, and thank you very much on that. I didn't realize the history of that at all. And it just reminded me of one of the presentations that MCOE had on equity. And they had an African-American, I think it was a professor, a leader in the community that put on a presentation over the Zoom. Basically, she, she said something that's kind of stuck with me and I try and practice. And she said, "Empathy and ask people, you know, just ask, have some empathy." And curiosity. Those are the two things that came away from it. And so if you're not curious about the other people and you don't have any empathy towards them, then, you know, you may do things, you know, that shouldn't be done. And so, you know, that's stuck with me, and I try and practice it. Not all the time, but I try my hardest to have that empathy and curiosity. Ask some people, "How are you doing today?" You know, "How are you feeling today? What's going on?" Say hi. Invite people into your home. Do what you can all the time and reach out. So that was, that was one of the takeaways. And hopefully, you know, the people that came up and spoke today, hopefully, we can, you know, we can do everything we can here and to maybe go in another direction. So that's all that I have. Oh, one last thing. We have the All-Star Game. It's our 20, I think, 21st game, if I got the math right. So it'll be March 12th over at Alsal High. And Trustee Rojas and myself have been working on that project for years. So we'll, Alsal will be hosting the 64 players in the county from the 20-odd high schools, the 11 per team, to 60 candidates down to to the 16 on every team. So, yeah. So anyway, thank you, and you're all invited. If you want to go, just let me know. And I'll save a seat there for you, and it should be a nice event. Ernesto Garcia has been there when he was principal. The other school needs to see in the event, so, you know, it's good to have all the people there, you know, celebrate the game and the kids playing. I think that's all that I have. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Drew.
So a few things. You hit several, you hit on many things. You can hear I'm still recovering. The artwork on the walls tonight is provided by Erica Craft's Art Students at Washington Middle School. So if you get a chance before you leave, some really good artwork. Also want to remind you the Monterey County School Board Association Dinner and organizational meeting is Thursday, March 30th at 5:30. If you want to attend, let me know or let Beatrice know as well. That's the Monterey County School Board Association Dinner and Organizational Meeting, March 30. We talked a lot about athletics and recognizing folks. Good to hear North Salinas High School won a state-level North Cal tournament game today. I don't know how Alisal did or not. Did they lost? Okay. So I also wanted to let you know that at Averdavas High School, I believe you all got an invitation from a student. Last Friday, they held the night market and movie night to support black-owned businesses and bring the community together. Students organized the entire event, doing invitations, meeting with members of the community. The event was well-attended, received recognition as well on the local news. It's always good to get positive coverage on the local news, so congratulations. I did reach out to the young person that organized the event, and I will be meeting with them and their class to talk about future events as well. It's good that we're all on the same page with being concerned about school safety. In particular, the types of antisocial behavior that we're seeing on campuses, including, there's an uptick in fighting right now on campuses. Students are following national trends with things. We talked about swatting before. Now there's a new trend called swarming, where kids are organizing fights between other students and having large, large masses of students be present and not let adults in. So we're dealing with that and looking for solutions with that. We also have seen an uptick in use of racial and homophobic slurs on campuses. It's something that needs to be addressed more thoroughly. We can, we've put some more resources on several campuses this week. It's not going to be enough. We know that. We have to assess what we have in place and what we don't. And I'm going to be meeting with site administration to look at other ways to look at school safety. So I really embrace the the thin ice that we stand on in terms of the law saying we need to have alternatives to suspension and at the same time needing to have schools that are places where kids feel safe, where adults feel safe to learn. And so the dashboard data itself is just a picture. And if it's looked at in a negative way because we need to ratchet up certain levels of discipline, then we'll have to own that as well. So we don't need students to get in that position further where they think that they're making their own rules for school. And at the same time, we need to involve them in the process of defining what their campuses should look like and be like. With that, I met with, I spent some time at Harden Middle School today with the principal, but I also met with a teacher earlier this evening. And she shared some concerns of what Harden Middle School staff are feeling about all of the activity that's going on, negative activity that's going on on the campus. Shared some suggestions for supporting staff and students. And I'll be following up with Principal Adesa on some of those as well. I also let the teacher know that if we set up a meeting, I'll come and listen as well to the staff. And I can probably bring Tom Woodward or Anna Aguión over so we can talk about, there's some facilities concerns with, there's some places on the facility. Staff are worried about our spots where kids can be, they hide out. And maybe there's some ways we can control that through our facilities. The, also wanted to recognize from the California State Athletic Directors Association, all of our athletic directors are part of that association. And last week, we were notified that Jose Gil received the 2022-23 Sue Kamayama Leadership Award for exceptional leadership skills over a long, meritorious career. So I'll have to find out what that means, meritorious career. But congratulations to him for being recognized by his peers through CADA. Or CSADA. I always leave and I forget something, and Beatrice says, "Hey, you forgot something." The, I had an opportunity to have a conversation with Pastor Smith before our event tonight, before our board meeting tonight. And I appreciated his genuine concerns for African-Americans in our district, but also for our community. And not just African-American students, but vulnerable students in our community as well. He also, you know, he, I don't have to talk for him. He spoke for himself, but one of the pieces of what he spoke about was the need for us to do an update for the board for the work we've been doing since the Doll Incident. And if it's okay with the board, I can schedule that for March 14th, and I can bring in staff and have a presentation on what we've been doing since then. Because then it becomes community knowledge as well. So you're okay with that?
Definitely.
Very good. Next week, you heard, you heard a couple of student reports. We had, we invited up to 50 students per school to attend a musical put on by an organization called Schoolyard Wrap. We've used their services previously in celebrating Black History Month. They did a musical on Black history. It was called Our Stories. Many of our students participated. It was voluntary, and it was voluntary for staff as well. And Dr. Christmas and I both attended. And the kids really received And the kids really received, received it well, professionally-done musical, um like they were on Broadway, right? So it was really cool for the kids to to be part of that. Next week, all of our middle schools and our ASB students from the high schools will be attending a Black and Latino history presentation at Sherwood Hall. I know what Sherwood Hall, Salinas Community Center at the rodeo grounds. Um, and part of that, I I know how old I am. The, so beyond just the Black and Latino history part of the presentation, we've also asked, can they um delve into the conversations about inappropriate usage of racial and homophobic slurs, including the um students using the N-word appropriately at all times? And so um, that should be a really good uh event for all of our students. Um, and that's next week, seven, eight, and nine. Um, so with that, I will yield back over to President Rubio.
Okay, it looks like we've got two action items today, two resolutions, so um what we need is a, is a motion on resolution twenty-three dash one-one, Caesar, uh Caesar Chavez date.
So move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. B is resolution twenty-three dash one zero or ten, ratification of payment for trustee Tracy Felice. Do I hear a motion for that?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good, passes. Um, and uh, nothing on information items. It's like it's blank here, so moving on to consent. So we've got a whole bunch of consent items here. So uh, does anybody need to pull anything out on this, just point? Okay, nothing but silence here, so I'm going to move on here. So can I have a motion for consent items?
So move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on any of this? No? Uh, so um, all in favor?
Aye.
And any, any opposed? No, it's like we're good. Okay, um, last thing is any future agenda items? I'm kind of keep, trying to keep a tally on how many meetings we have, how many meetings we have.
I believe you have seventeen as president, Mr. Rubio.
The board, the board has seventeen meetings.
If, if, that's only regular meetings. We've talked about adding a special to do some more data review as well.
So if you have concerns, uh, yes, thank you, thank you. If you have any concerns, that's how many meetings we have, so don't, don't sit on them, you know, uh, put them up so that way we can talk about it. All right, so thank you very much. Oh, yes, ma'am, yes.
I know um, well, our trustee is not here, but one of the issues that she did bring up was the foundation. Do we have an update on that?
So we're going to agendize that
Okay.
for a future presentation. The ed- foundation is not a component of the district. It's an outside agency
Okay.
that the district has a connection to, obviously, and one of you sits as an ex officio on that board. Um, and we're trying to get back um, all of the documentation from them so we can have somebody else take it over.
Okay.
That's where we're at with it.
Okay, all right, so uh, again, future agenda items. And uh, our next meeting is going to be the fourteen, uh, yeah, the uh, March fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. And I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, so uh, all in favor? Okay, meeting closed. Thank you. All right.